Uh, open this up with a word of prayer. I'm gonna ask everyone to please stand and welcome up a prayer.
Let's pray. Father God, in the presence of Jesus, Lord God, we thank you so much. Lord God, we just pray to be lifted up. We thank you for being God all by yourself. Lord God, we ask even now, Lord God, that your presence is dwell in this place. Lord God, that as we begin to make decisions and the leaders begin to make decisions, Lord God, they'll make their decisions, Lord God, with an okay checkmark from you. Let their hearts, Lord God, go out to you for a reasonable answer to the citizens' requests. And we, we thank you so much because we know without you, we wouldn't even be here. So we glorify and we magnify you. Our blessing, Lord, is our prayer on today. And we thank you in Jesus' name.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll for Councilman?
Councilman Mosley?
Present.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Present.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Present.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Present.
You have four presents and one absent.
Item four, we have presentation of the minutes from the previously held meeting on Thursday, May 12th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve item four? Is there a second?
I second it.
Been moved by Councilwoman June Hamilton Dean. Seconded by Councilwoman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item five, approval of a proposed agenda. Is there a motion to approve the proposed agenda? I make the motion. Been moved by Councilwoman June Hamilton Dean. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. We have item six, reports of the Public Works Committee. Councilman Eastern, he is not here and is absent. I will read through the legislation. I'm gonna ask Ms. Clemmons, if she will come forward, just in case council has questions about the, the items we're about to go on. While Ms. Clemmons is coming forward, I will go to item 6A. Presentation of a resolution for the mayor and city council to award a contract to Hanks Escavating for 22nd Street from State Street to St. Clair Avenue, sewer cleaning and televising. Ms. Clemmons, could you give us a brief overview of what this project will include?
Uh, yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, this is a continuation of 22nd Street. Before we decided to go from State Street to St. Clair Avenue, we needed to find out the situation with the sewers. And that's why we needed to televise prior to trying to fix the street. There's issues with the sewers in that area. So we needed to telephile and televise so we could have a better idea as to what's going on with the situation there.
100 block of 22nd Street, are you talking about?
We're talking about, uh, 6 and 7 block in that area.
Cause we just had the... Which one did we just have, hey, 100 block?
That was the 4 block, 500 block from Martin P. Drive to State Street.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions?
Since the mic is not working, can she speak up, please? Oh, I didn't...
Ms. Clemmons, just...
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna do that.
Is there a motion to approve item 6A? I make the motion. Been moved by Councilwoman June Hamilton Dean. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 6B, we have presentation of a resolution for the Marion City Council to award a contract to McClair Asphalt for, uh, botuminous, botuminous mixture. And that is for patching material we need for the city. Of course, we definitely need that approved. Okay. So citizens, this is just approving, uh, the asphalt material that we need for patching the streets. Of course, we have many holes to be filled. So that's what that's for. Is there a motion? Do we have a motion?
No.
No. Is, is there a motion for item 6B? I'd like to make the motion. Been moved by Councilwoman Dean. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item C, presentation of a resolution for the Marion City Council to award a contract to Columbia Query Company for aggregate, uh, six materials.
Yeah, six materials. And that is the rock that would be needed for spreading in different holes and different in the alley for the streets.
Did everybody hear that? That's the rock for the alleys and the streets. Is there a motion to approve item 6C? I make the motion to approve item 6C. Been moved by Councilwoman Dean. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Passes. Item 6D, presentation of a resolution appropriating motor fuel tax funds for professional engineering services.
Okay. Currently, this year, we are trying to do quite a few of all the tip streets. I'm not sure if this is on your, on your documentation, but we need this engineering plan and specification approved so we can, uh, do those streets. And I got this so we will be able to follow their guidelines. They will not allow us to do anything until we follow those guidelines. So we need the engineering for that. We have about, I think, maybe close to 20 streets that we're getting ready to do.
All right. Is there a motion to approve item 6D? I make the motion to approve item 6D. Is there a second? I'll second it. Do we have any questions for item 6?
Uh, Mayor, uh, if you approve this, can you put the attachment of streets to go with this? So when, uh, people come and ask, do you know exactly what streets that you're approving for this, uh, engineering group to go for?
Yes, I will make sure.
So can, can you include that she would give me the streets? And how many streets there are? So can the attached stuff that would come along the other?
Okay. We will include that in the motion that an attachment of a list of streets for this particular, uh, legislation is to be included? Question, Councilwoman Mosley?
I remember having problems down from... It's just been coming down, uh, on 30th Street. 30th Street in that?
30th Street?
30th, 30th Street.
From where to where?
Um, State Street to going to going south.
Yes, sir. I would provide you with a list tomorrow morning.
Say that again?
I said, I will provide you with a list of all the streets that are on that list.
These are these are the streets that's gonna be repaired?
Yes.
Coming up?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 30th Street's down there?
Yes, sir.
I can't miss church Sunday for here to be a church Sunday, but they asking me. Okay.
Do we have any further questions from council about item 6D? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
No.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have two... You have two eyes, two nays, and one abs.
Motion failed. Hopefully, we'll be able to discuss why the motion failed and what the unreadiness is. Item 6E. Councilman Mosley, is there a certain street you wanna see on the list?
I don't 30th Street, I don't know.
Is that?
What?
Council, I mean, uh, Ms. Clemmons?
I don't guess we can do it right now. We got council meeting, but if we can talk about it later, I can make sure 30th Street. Because they, they, they've been down here. They came, uh, last week, I think before that. And there was complaint about the street that we had, that the city had been forcing them, uh, some work and work and work. And they haven't been down yet. And, uh, I seen it Sunday, he said it was coming down and it might be, I don't know. Mr. Slater, is he on the agenda?
Who is that?
He's on the agenda, it's the, Mr. Slater.
Slater, is he here?
He's not here.
Okay. Ms. Clemmons?
Uh, all I can say is this, that these streets were planned some time ago. And if we do not pass them pretty soon, then we will not have those streets. We have more, you'll have more citizens complaining too. Because if we do not pass them, as long as we wait to pass that and get the documentation to I-DOT, it's the longer it'll take before we were able to go out there bidding on those projects, the streets. So we may not get any done this year if we just keep, uh, if we keep, uh, not passing it. So maybe next year, 30th Street could be on there. They've already done the design. Get, all of that work is already at I-DOT. And everybody can't get every street. I would like for them to get them, but we just can't. We don't have enough money. We only had approximately $700,000 in the budget for street repairs for motor fuel tax. And prior to me coming on, that money was appropriated for that. So, and there was a list of streets and we prioritized the one that listed we had. So I will be more than happy to provide you with a list of streets. But the longer we wait, the other citizens will not be able to get any streets integrally. If you look at 32nd, for instance, 32nd and Douglas, 32nd Street from Caseyville to Forest, I went there. You can't go down that street. It's very, very difficult. So on 53rd and Ohio, 53rd Street, Ohio to 59th Street, you can't go down the street. And then there's one on Mary. And that's, uh, I believe is from Terrace to one of those streets. You cannot go down that street. But if we keep delaying, I mean, no one is gonna get benefit from this pro, uh, this program this year. It'd be next year. If you, you wait till the winter comes, then you can't do what we need to do. You have more pothole, uh, and the situation's gonna get worse. You know, we would like to put all the streets, every street that the city has in here there, street on, on the list. But someone has to wait. And I don't know who that's gonna be. You all have to make that decision.
Well, I'd just like to kinda comment on that as well. I know that some of these streets have been being repaired for so many years. Uh, citizens have suffered that are on those particular streets. And I know that Ms. Clemmons is really trying to address those areas that are really, uh, just horrible and almost undrivable. So this is something that if, if council hasn't had readiness about, we need to go ahead and get it cleared very quickly because, uh, the priority, the priority is our citizens as far as the streets are concerned.
And we'd like to, another, piggyback on that. We'd like to plan now for the streets for the following years. So we would be here at the, in the council trying to get something passed in June and when we should have it ready by the end of the year so we can start working in the spring. And that, that's one of the streets we need to prioritize that to put it on the list and get it done.
So how many streets are we talking about, Ms. Clemmons?
We're talking approximately about 20 streets.
City manager?
Sure. What, what type of work has went in so far as far as getting these streets prepared to be submitted to I-DOT?
Uh, the plans and specification have been designed. And I-DOT is in the final, uh, stage of approval of this. They're tweaking the plan and specification. So we're just waiting on them in a few days to do that. So you pass everything else, but you then pass the engineering. The, the engineer has to be paid for all his work.
And what's, all right. And what's the timeline for us to get this approved by council?
What is the timeline now? I need it done now. You know, we're just trying to move forward for the citizens of East St. Louis so they can, uh, have better streets to travel on.
Okay, I would ask council to reconsider item 6. Item 6D, because as, as we can see, it's paramount. It's at the crucial point. And we've got 20 streets that need to be fixed. Right. Moving right along to item 6E. Presentation of a resolution for the Marion City Council to award a contract to Thompson Civil LLC for preliminary engineering services for street improvement at various locations in the city of East St. Louis. Is there a motion to approve item 6E? I make the motion to approve item 6E. Is there a second? I'll second it to get it on the floor. Ms. Gird, uh, can you kinda explain what this would, this, uh, contract would be doing? Is that connected with item 6D?
That's connected with D.
Okay.
That's the motor fuel tax.
So those two are connected?
Yeah, that's connected.
Okay.
One is appropriate motor fuel tax fund for the engineering development. It's actually a business of...
Okay. Do you have any questions from council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
No.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
No.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have two eyes, two nays, and one abs.
Motion fails. Hopefully, we'll be able to bring this back so that the citizens can get their streets fixed that need to be fixed. Item 6F. Presentation of an ordinance for the Marion City Council to award a contract to Herschel Shade Engineering Services. Uh, Ms. Clemmons, can you tell the citizens what this, uh, contract is for?
This contract is for the tip project. The tip project this year had about $600,000 in the budget to, uh, to do streets. And we have here, Boucare Avenue from Yeltsin Drive to 111, 157, and Ohio Avenue, 53rd to 59th. 32nd Street from Caseyville Avenue to Forest. And that will, they will be able to do the design, engineering of the street for the tip, uh, funds.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item 6F? I make the motion to approve item 6F. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Dean. Seconded by Councilman Mosley. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Ms. Clemmons, before you sit down, what's the timeline again on the two items that did not pass?
What's the timeline? I guess the next week. We have another month away. It just, it should be perfect after really. I thought, uh, no time limit. We can carry to the next year. That's what, you know, that's what the council wishes.
Again, I'm gonna encourage council to please get any questions answered about this very important legislation so that we can get our citizens' streets fixed. Of course, we hear complaints regularly at the meetings about streets not being fixed. And they need to know, when legislation like this is held up, what's the reasoning behind it?
Cause if it's just the 30th Street, I can have the engineers look at it and see if they're, if we could add it to it, see what it costs to do that. If that's the only issue, I don't know.
Are you gonna provide us with a list of the streets?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Item 7, reports of the Finance Committee Chairman, June Hamilton Dean. Thank you, Mayor. Item 7A, presentation of an ordinance authorizing the Illinois Municipal League to act as a clearinghouse in the collection and distribution of the... I'm sorry. A presentation of the ordinance authorizing the Illinois Municipal League to act as a clearinghouse in the collection and distribution of a 2% fire department tax due to the city of East St. Louis. I make a motion to approve item 7A?
Sure.
Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 7B, presentation of an ordinance for the Marion City Council to approve the 2016 federal fund technical budget amendment number one. I'd like to make the motion to approve item 7B?
Second.
Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 7C, presentation of the 2016 Burn Justice Assistance Grant, JAG, Program Intergovernmental Agreement between the cities of Belleville and East St. Louis and the county of St. Clair, Illinois. I'd like to make a motion to approve, approve item 7C?
Second.
Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 7D, presentation of the year-to-date city treasuries report for the month ending April 30th, 2016. I make the motion to approve item 7D. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Dean. Seconded by Councilwoman Greenwood. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four eyes and one absent.
Motion passes. Item 7E, presentation of an ordinance for the Marion City Council to approve the 2016 tip budget amendment number one. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7E. Is there a second? I will second it. Do we have any questions?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
This amendment, uh, city manager, is for the payment of those outstanding yields?
Yes. Yes.
Do we have any further questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
No.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have three eyes, one nay, and one absent.
Motion fails. Items, item 7F, presentation of the General Filing Budget Amendment Number One, Option One. I'd like to make a motion to approve item 7F. Second. Do we have any questions? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Mosley?
No.
Councilman Hamilton Dean?
Yes.
Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Eastern? Councilman Greenwood?
No.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have two eyes, two nays, and one absent.
Motion fails. Do we have anything further from the Finance Committee? Thank you, Councilwoman June Hamilton Dean. Again, I would encourage the citizens to take a look at legislation if you have it privy to you so you can understand what is voted, what is being voted against. We have some very crucial, uh, budget amendments that need to take place in order for this administration to move forward at this time that is not happening. Uh, this legislation has come before council. This is the second time. Okay, so understand when things are not moving forward, there is a reason. Okay? All right. We're gonna move on to item eight, reports of the Public Safety Committee Chairman, Latoya Greenwood.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 8A, presentation of regulatory affairs business license applications. They are, uh, Mello's Used Tire Shop, 8100 State Street. I make, I make the motion to approve item 8A.
Uh, on the question, do we have anybody from Regulatory Affairs City Manager who can answer the question as far as, uh, I see the location? I know we've had some issues with tires in the community. And, uh, as far as a plan to...
Sure. Mayor, I don't have anybody currently available if you want to table it to the next time. Uh, we can discuss Regulatory Affairs, any unreadiness anybody has as far as the business location. Or its location, or its operation, if you have to.
We have a motion in the second of the floor.
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
Our proposed table of it?
Uh, we need, uh, Mr. Mosley to draw...
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, the motion has been drawn. We're gonna table this particular piece of legislation until we have our questions answered as relates to this tire business.[1740.12] Thank you so much.
Item eight B, Presentation of an Ordinance Amending the Wage Table for the Contract with the Fraternal Order of Police. I make a motion to approve item eight B.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman Greenwood, seconded by Councilwoman Mosley. Um, do we have any questions from council? Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Councilwoman Mosley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hamilton-Ding?
Yes.
Councilwoman Eastern, Councilwoman Eastern, Councilwoman Eastern, Councilwoman Greenwood?
Yes.
Mayor Jackson Hicks?
Yes.
You have four I's and one F's.
Motion passes. Councilwoman Greenwood, do we have any further reports from the Public Safety Committee?
Um, we are having, is the chief in here? We're having a public safety forum, City Manager, June, June twenty first?
Yes.
At?
Six P.M.
Six P.M.
Yes.
So I encourage all the citizens to come out, the police, fire, emergency services, mental health?
Yes.
And some other organizations will be present. Thanks.
Flyer, flyer coming soon.
Okay, thank you.
Item nine, Reports of the Community Development Committee. Looks like we don't have any at this point from our chair. Um, so we're going to move on to item ten. Do we have any old business? Under old business, uh, City Manager, I'd like you to kind of discuss, uh, the TIP amendment that was voted down today, some of the things that, uh, we're proposing here.
Sure. Um, well, some of the businesses are actually here tonight, and they're on the agenda to speak directly to council. I've had a meeting with, um, multiple of those companies, uh, more than once, as far as, uh, our ability to pay our obligations and not what I'm legally confined to do, and what I, what I need to do in order to do that. Um, and I think they understand. Um, that's why they're present. I think some of them drove, um, a, a, a good distance to be here tonight to address council itself, so they complete their own case.
Is that the same case for the General Fund of Budget Amendment?
The General Fund is a little different. Uh, there are different things that we're trying to do at City Hall as far as getting a generator, get another police officer for public safety purposes, hire Regulatory Affairs Director. Um, I mean, there, there's a laundry list of things that we're trying to do in order to just move, move things forward, so.
Okay, so for the General Fund of Budget Amendment, there, there is a proposal to hire a Regulatory Affairs Director. At this point, we do not have one. One of the main complaints has been code enforcement. Uh, that department is bleeding, and until we are able to properly fix it, we will not be able to address those issues that need to be addressed as far as code enforcement is connected to our public safety. The weeds that you see, the, the dilapidated houses that you see. These are the things, uh, the businesses that we need to address. These are the things that we're trying to put a meter in place so these issues can be properly addressed. Okay, so that's very crucial. At this point, we do not have a generator, a backup generator as a city, so what does that mean for us? If something happens, you know, God forbid there is some type of natural disaster, we're not prepared to handle that. Okay, so that's also a part of that General Fund Budget Amendment. These are crucial items, crucial items for you, the citizens. And what's the third item, City Manager?
There's, there's, I mean, that's a laundry list. I mean, there's a grant writer, um, the city doesn't have a grant writer. Uh, we are in, in a financial crisis, um, and we need all the free money that we can get. We don't have people to, to even just write the grants that we need in order to, to get the free money out there. Uh, I, I can't hold them over.
We don't have a grant writer, so what does that mean? Who's applying for the grants? So these are the things that are in the General Fund Budget Amendment. Very crucial. Okay. New business. We have item eleven A, A Presentation from Ameren of Illinois. We want to welcome them here, and please come forward.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time. I'm Diane Saffick with Ameren, and I'm an engineer with the Environmental Services Department. And I'm here today to talk about an environmental cleanup that we'll be doing at Two Thousand Two Lynch Avenue. So this is a twelve ECO parcel that's located near the Jackie Joyner-Kersey Center as well as Parsons Place. And I just would like to give you a little background on my work here. We met with the City Manager, and then he suggested that we provide some information to the council. So this is an opportunity for us to share with you where we're at, as well as answering questions that you might have at this time. So in the front here, I have a little poster with a summary, but I also have some handouts, and may I come forward? And this is just a one-page summary of our project.
You're welcome.
We have some extras. There you go, and I have some more that we can pass out to our last, others will continue with the presentation. So we don't want to take too much of your time, but we just would like to provide a general overview of our project. So I'll give this to someone right after. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, as I mentioned, this is a former manufactured gas plant, and we'll be working with the Illinois EPA on the cleanup. And back in the early nineteen hundreds, this was a good site. Sure, I'll try to, if you can hear me. I'll try to speak up. But then, what we'll be doing is we'll be doing a cleanup of a site located near the Jackie Joyner-Kersey Center, and this was a former manufactured gas plant. And we'll be cleaning up the soil. We plan to start some activities in the summer, putting up fences and clearing, and then we'll start with our project in late summer. And so a few things that I wanted to point out, like some things to expect, that there'll be some noises, some construction traffic during our work, as well as some dust and odors, but we'll take measures to make sure that we do not impact the community. So those are a few highlights that I wanted to share. And the project will take, will be, will start in late summer, and it should be completed by the end of twenty seventeen.
Twenty seventeen?
Correct. Do you have any questions at this time?
Ameren will be ahead of the site, and are they hiring local people to help with the cleanup, or how is that going to work?
We will contract with diverse suppliers, and with this work, we need, you have, they have to have special skills, but we will definitely reach out to local vendors and hire them as possible.
I have a question, and I, that, that's asked by neighborhood. When they actually were, uh, working on the streets, will they be having the hammers that go down deep? The actual hammers that go down deep into the, up into the ground?
We won't be working in the street. We'll be working...
No, not the street, but on the property.
On the property. Hammers, we'll have excavators. I, I don't anticipate hammers, but we will be excavating in depths that'll be between three feet below ground surface and twenty-two feet, so we'll be going deep.
Okay, that's fine. The other reason I was asking, they, they have projects going on the other end, and when it went down, it actually affected the, uh, streets and sewers. That will be, we will have to do that. So I suppose.
So we don't anticipate any, any issues or concerns, but we'll definitely be monitoring, and, you know, we're coming to you today to give you some information along the way. We'd like to have, you know, you're more than welcome to ask us questions.
Mayor, I've got a question.
Sure, Councilwoman Mosley.
Oh, no, what did you happen to mention? You mentioned that, uh, it would reach out to, if, if their system, you can't go and qualify. How do they, how do they reach out? They go online, or how do they, they apply for the jobs?
How would local citizens apply for the, or local companies apply for the job, or for the, the work?
Uh, and I'm John Beck, and I work in environmental services as well, so we will be working with our, our sourcing department to, uh, to reach out to the contractors. So, um, uh, we'll, we'll contact the city, and then we'll work out some of those details. So, uh, we do, we've talked about this greatly. We do want to make sure that we're, to the greatest consent possible, we're, we're offering opportunities to, uh, to the local suppliers, and we'll, and we'll make sure that is done, so. We'll, we'll talk to the City Manager afterwards and make sure we've got the right contact.
Okay, thank you.
And, Mayor, I would just like that, we did have a meeting with Ameren as well about this specific, this specific project, and I recommend that they come before council to kind of give you guys more information about what's going on. More importantly, just to let the citizens know that they'll be working in the area. Uh, they'll have big tents up and lights, I mean, so, so when you see it, we want to make sure that you're informed about what's going on, that it just doesn't pop up, and I think Ameren, Ameren came to us first before they thought of, before they started doing the project, to make sure we were fully aware about what's going on. And if I understand correctly, there will be information going out to the citizens, notices, those types of things as well, correct?
Correct. We'll be sending out public back sheets. Correct.
Okay. I noted on the piece of information that you gave us that the site was, uh, obtained by Ameren in twenty fifteen. Once the property is cleaned up, are there any future plans for it?
A decision hasn't been made at this time, but more information, as it becomes available, we should.
Will you work with the city on that decision as far as?
Informing you of the decision?
Well, actually, or just to discuss some options before final decision tonight?
We can discuss and see. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.